Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30. We do have a quorum here tonight. We'll excuse Carter Wilkie, he might be here later. We are at a city council work meeting, October the 22nd, 2025, at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being held at the council chambers at City Office 10 North Main Street in Cedar City, Utah. We're honored to have Mr. Steve Nelson to lead, to offer a prayer, after which Mr. Scott Phillips will lead us in the pledge.
Father in heaven, we come before thee tonight. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to live in this great city, in this great country. We're thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy and the opportunities that we have to participate in our, in our communities, to serve and to, to be engaged in, in how they function and run. We're thankful for those that are willing to, to put themselves out there to, to be in these roles. And pray that thou will bless our elected officials tonight and always that they may have wisdom and, and humility as they try to address the, the issues that face our city. We pray for those that are employees of the city and the staff of our city, that they too will have a, be blessed with an attitude of service and a desire to, to be public servants in the way that they take care of our, the resources that, that we all give to, to the good of the whole. We are so thankful for all that we have and again to live in this beautiful place and the associations that we enjoy here. And we pray for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I-
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, I would move that we approve this agenda order for this work meeting on October 22nd.
Second.
I have motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Keith Naylor, is Keith here? Who? No, no, I thought you pointed that direction, I hadn't seen him yet. So I, I've, I'm putting forth the name of Keith Naylor, he's supposed to be coming, I hoped he would say a word to be, to serve on the Board of Adjustments. I did not get it done until Monday about 1 o'clock, too late for the agenda, but he needs to be approved next week so that he can serve the 1st of December. He'll take the place of Terry Hermanson. Perhaps when, if he shows up a little later, we'll ask him to introduce himself to us. I, I think you thought he was coming here tonight, but if you-
And he has accepted, is that correct?
He did accept, yes.
Okay.
That is all I have. Well, I, yes, no, I have, I want to read this proclamation declaring November as Homeless Youth Awareness Month. I've been asked to read this Cedar City, Utah proclamation, whereas Youth Futures provides safe shelter, collaborative resources, respectful guidance, and diverse support for unaccompanied and at-risk youth in Utah, helping young people stabilize and build a path to long-term well-being. And whereas in the past year, Youth Futures provide emergency sheltering and safe housing for over 298 youth, while expanding access to vital mental health and job readiness programs and life skills such as healthy relationships, budgeting, navigation of community resources. And whereas, community support helps fund shelters, meals, therapy, and case management for local youth who experience homeless, homelessness, and whereas Youth Futures' shelter programs demonstrates an 80% success rate in preventing adult homelessness among the youth they serve, underscoring the effectiveness of early trauma-informed intervention. And whereas, November is observed as a Homeless Youth Awareness Month, an opportunity for residents, businesses, schools, faith communities, and civic partners to learn, volunteer, donate, and advocate for every young person as a safe place to sleep and a path forward. And whereas Cedar City recognizes that the safety and well-being of youth are essential to a vibrant, thriving community and that the local collaboration is a key to ending youth homelessness. Now therefore, I, Mayor Garth O'Green, do hereby declare November as Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Cedar City, and encourage all residents to support efforts that provide shelter, safety, shelter, and opportunities for youth.
Thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you. That's all I have, as council members.
I have one, yes.
Please.
Um, I, I have a, so that I do not repeat myself and go on and on, I have a written statement I'd like to read. In this past week, we have mourned the loss of a Cedar City fireman, Scott Carlisle. As we reflect upon our first responders, the fire department and the Cedar City Police Department, it's clear that we cannot fully comprehend the stress they endure with each call. Whether it is a fire, a home invasion, an accident, or a domestic violence situation, or any other emergency, these men and women face challenges that most of us will never experience. I know that both the Cedar City Police Department and the Cedar City Fire Department offer and encourage counseling for those who need it. To honor Mr. Carlisle's passing, I would like to encourage and suggest that mental health support be made more readily available. To our first responders, I hesitate to word, use the word mandate, but I strongly recommend that each member of these departments meet with mental health professionals at least once a quarter. In my conversation with Chief Phillips and Chief Adams, I have learned that some individuals may originally be reluctant to seek help, however, after participating in counseling, many discovered that it has provided significant relief and support during their struggles and trials. Wherefore, I would propose that we look at the funds in our budget every year specifically for those services. In addition, I would, we should actively seek out grants and other ways of funding sources to help provide the necessary resources for mental health treatment. By pursuing these opportunities, we can further ensure that financial constraints do not hinder our ability to support our first responders. As a councilman, I recognize that we full, cannot fully understand what these brave individuals go through. We are not in their shoes, but we can do so, ensuring the opportunity for support are always within reach. I hope we can find it in our hearts and in our budget, budget to help these individuals so that in the future, we might prevent the hardship and loss we are currently experiencing. Thank you, Ron Riddle.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, I think that was very well said, and I think all of us within the city community are feeling this great loss, and, and we hope that our first responders would reach out. We, we know the tremendous stress and the anguish that they deal with on pretty much a daily basis, and I would support you in that. And I know that as we come into budget time, we do have resources there, some are utilized, some are not, but as you point out, we need to make sure it becomes a priority.
I think so.
To take care of them, just alike with their compensation, their mental well-being is also part of that package. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman, do you have anything? Councilman Cox?
No, I echo your sentiment, I really do. Unfortunately, cops and police and firefighters are type A and I got this, right? And they're, they're the last ones to say, I need help, but we need to do something to break down that barrier and say, yeah, we can, we can accept it, so.
Well, I, Mayor, I have two brief announcements, so I'll just change the tone a little bit here. I just want to remind all the citizens that our Cedar City Livestock and Heritage Festival begins tomorrow and runs through the weekend, and we, we had some, we had some difficulties here yesterday, but I think we've diverted that all with UDOT and with our new project on Main Street with Maverick, and we had some concerns with some construction going on. But I think that clearer heads prevailed, and I think we've got it resolved where our sheep can come down the street, and the wagons will be there, the longhorns will be there, the horses will be there, and I appreciate UDOT's support, and I especially want to do a shout out to Cobalt Construction because they have stepped in and made some concessions so this could all work out in the benefit of the long run of our community and the event. I know people come from far and wide, I've got family coming from Las Vegas to see this event, so we want to make sure it continues. In that same vein, I also wanted to remind citizens and let them know if they don't, that tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, we are unveiling two new historic markers on buildings on our Main Street. One of them is what is now currently Vittles Cafe. It was one of the oldest buildings still standing on our Main Street, it was built in 1895. It started out as the Palace Drug, and we'll be unveiling that marker as well as the Bullock Drug Building, which we think is very appropriate, as is the Sheep Association Building, and we'll be highlighting that as well. These will be brief ceremonies, five, 10 minutes for each one of them, but we will unveiling those markers tomorrow, and anyone's welcome to come and attend, so I just wanted to get that out there, Mayor.
What time?
Uh, 6 o'clock, and we'll start at the Bullock Building and we'll move down to Vittles Cafe right-
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
There are two sixes.
Oh, 6:00 PM, yes. I, I'm not the AM guy, that's Mr. Riddle.
I'll be up.
I have the calendar.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Staff, Kent, I think you have, you and Dallas have a-
Yeah, so I'd like to bring an item before the council members that came before you back in February. The exhibit I just put on the screen here may look familiar to you, we, we had discussion about a variance to the engineering standards to allow this narrow roadway connection that we were proposing to connect these two cul-de-sac bulbs. So that was an item that came before council, before the change was made to our ordinance to allow the city engineer to make those various decisions, this was a decision made by council. So what has, at that time, we had a, a long lot here where, if you can see my yellow cursor, where this was at the time proposed to be a common lot, an open space lot. And then there's, there was a lot here that was a fairly large lot. What has happened since then is property changed hands, the new owner would like to add some, some more lots here. That long lot roughly corresponds, not exactly, to what's now shown on here as lots three, four, and five. This other lot was also, you know, split, so to speak, and not really split because it didn't exist yet, but they're, they are showing additional there. The other lots are, the configuration has had some slight refinement to it, but otherwise it's the same. The reason we bring this to you, the council did approve this variance, as part of the discussion on that variance, there was some discussion about how many homes there will actually be on that street, right? And with this change, that would increase the number of homes. I do want to say that when I recommended that we approve this, my recommendation would have been the same with this number of lots as it was with the previous number of lots. That didn't change, but I don't know to what extent that influenced the city council on how that vote went forward. So we wanted to bring this to you to see whether this is an issue that you would like to formally reconsider in an action meeting, whether you think we're okay to just proceed on this, or what kind of feedback you might have, and Paul or Dallas, if either of you have something to add, or Randall, please do.
Can you jump back to the other one real quick? So the only other thing that I wanted to make sure was in the discussion when you talk about this, is if you look at what is labeled as number 20 right there, in both of the meetings where this was discussed, both the work and action meeting, Dallas stated that that would be open space. So again, if that influences how you would have voted, how you would vote now, please just keep that in mind as well.
Dallas, can I go civil? As, as I remember the, so what, I've been working back and forth with Ken over the last day or two on this, as Ken stated, this is the vicinity plan that had been approved several years ago, and then we came back and we're starting to revitalize it with the previous owner, it's since changed hands, and we ended up pulling this road a little further back to try to make these lots work in there, so the, the road configuration is slightly different. The way that, that I remember-
Further north, you mean?
Yeah, so we, we pull, we tighten this curve up so that the road, so there's more space.
So here, so here's the new now, and you can see that there, there's a little bit different curvature, and they've tried to create a little more space here. There's limits on what they can do because of the hillside, but yeah.
And, and so in our discussions with staff, we've, we, staff does not want us to enter on South Mountain, and so we've-
Agreed.
Tried to make it, tried to make it work on this one, and I was of the opinion that the variance was more to go from 500 feet to 1,000 feet, and then we added this non-standard road in to make it easier for roads, garbage, fire, snowplow turnaround. And so I, I remember it being a, a thought that there's not a lot of houses on here, the number of lots that would have been on here in the previous configuration was six, this one has nine, so we're talking about an increase of three. But with the previous developer, we had talked about that lot 20 being open space, knowing that there were drainage issues with the subdivision and the, this was one of the original RE subdivisions before that road section's changed, just with about every project that we've done, and so in designing this, we had also done some storm drain, which is down here to try to mitigate that, and so by trying to remove some of those stormwater concerns and realigning the road, the new owners of the property wanted to try to make this work with these smaller lots in here. Just as far as where we're at in the process, I think we brought this forward in February for the variance approval, and we've since gone through and done a first review with city staff. I believe the second review is done, it just hasn't been released to us, kind of depending on what happens tonight, but we also had gotten a grading permit from the city, and, and we've already been grading roads and everything, and so that's why we brought this on the staff comment, was because there's a lot of things at play, and like, I was hoping for a, kind of an informal, yeah, where this doesn't really change our decision, but Ken had mentioned that if it needs to go to a vote, that we could have it on for next week, so.
So I have a couple of questions. By adding, when we talked about this being open space, I remember this conversation quite well, there was discussion about storm drainage and allowing that open space to sort of help carry some of that. What's going to happen with this additional building and hard spaces, hard surface driveways and whatnot, and then we are increasing access to that road now, as you indicate, three more.
Yep.
Particularly, I'm concerned about number three, I think it is, where we have okayed that narrower road, because originally there wouldn't have been, but they're going to have to have, I assume, some sort of driveway there, access.
Yeah, so you can actually, you can see this note right here, and we have notes throughout the plat-
I actually can't, I actually can't see it.
Okay. Well, you can see-
I mean, I see it, I have no idea what it says.
But you can see a little better here.
No, no lot access or driveways to the maintenance road will be prohibited, and then we have notes on the preliminary plaque construction drawings, and those will translate to the final plat that says this lot, this lot, and this lot will not have access, so we're meeting our minimum lot width requirement off the cul-de-sac there.
Off the cul-de-sac.
And then we've got this one here, so I think it's lots two, three, 13, and then nine in phase one are not allowed to have driveway access.
And remind me, what is that narrower road width? I don't recall.
It was 30, it was 30, we have a 30-foot corridor, it was 26 feet from curb to curb.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's a two-foot curb and gutter, and then there's 24 feet asphalt.
Yeah, and the service warehouse is 30 feet is plenty, I mean, obviously you're going to have traffic through there, but-
Yeah, and, and the intent really was so that the sewer department and snowplows didn't have to flip around in that cul-de-sac, and so, and but we are, we are bringing utilities through there, and so we needed to have a maintenance road for Randy and for the sewer department anyways, and so part of the, can we get a variance as if we do a substandard road for the city's benefit with limiting driveway access, we can extend it, and, and so that's where I thought the variance was more focused on, but I understand staff's precaution in saying, hey, it was these amount of lots, and now it's a little bit more, and so let's bring it back just to make sure that that wasn't a big factor. The way I remember it, it didn't seem like it was a big factor, but doesn't matter what I remember.
Well, no, we, I mean, you're absolutely right, we don't want people pulling out on the South Mountain Drive.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we care very much about what you think, Mr. Chris.
And then I, you had another question about drainage, so-
Yeah.
So these certainly, if we develop those lots, they'll have an increased flow from open space, but one of the problems with the original residential estates road section was just that it had a one-foot borrow ditch and a 45-foot rideaway.
Right.
And so we have curb gutter sidewalk proposed in our construction drawings on all the new roads, and then on this one, we have a super elevation, so instead of the typical crown that you see, where the center line of the road is the high point, and then it sheets either side, we're doing a super elevation so that everything drains to the south side, we're curb and guttering around here, and then we're putting drop inlets and tying that into the existing outfall line from phase one, maybe if you could pan over, so we're putting a new drainage easement right here, and then we're bringing storm drain across. So we're basically trying to load this side of the road with all the new runoff from this road and pick it up so that it doesn't get sent down to here, which is where the drainage issue is.
Yeah, but it's, there's a pretty good hillside there, that water's going to run down there, I mean, it's, I don't want to be in lot three, I'm just saying.
In lot three, yeah, I, I think we have, I think we have four drop inlets, and so I'm, I'm pretty confident that all the runoff that comes down this road is going to get picked up versus sending it down the curb and gutter and then send it into those borrow ditches and cross gutters and all that, so.
Does the street department have any issues with this change? I'm putting you on the spot, but I just need to know.
No, no, I, other than maybe required the red curb that, that access.
Yeah, well, we talked about that before, actually.
I think we, we have a sign shown on, we have signs shown on the plat to say no parking. I think that we had talked about the maintenance component of striping it long-term, so I think we have it as signs on the construction drawings.
Yeah, what we had discussed before was we'd have a sign for no parking, if, if compliance is low, then we would follow that up with red curving, but we didn't want to maintain the red paint if we don't need to, if the signs are effective.
There shouldn't be too much parking on there, I mean, there's not much-
And just to clarify, you don't have a problem with this change, right?
I, I do not, no. You know, as you can see on this drawing here where, where Dallas has kind of sketched in the setback lines, and, and this is still a little bit of a work in progress, we're still working through some issues there, the buildable envelope ends up being pretty small on some of these lots, and, and so that's an issue they're going to have to grapple with, see if they can even make the lots work.
Get a house fit on there.
Yeah, but if they can make the lots work, the question is whether, whether that would invalidate the decision that was made earlier, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it.
Put a tiny home on there, that'd be good.
Good.
Just barely.
Okay, I, I think with staff's understanding and those concerns being addressed on the storm drainage, I'm, I'm okay in moving ahead with it.
I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
It just makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other, other staff comments tonight? Seen non-public comments tonight?
Ann Clark, time is getting short, the election is coming, and I just personally wanted to stand and publicly thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all, I've been sitting here for four years now, and I've watched you do many, many wonderful, great things for our city, and I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but I want you to know, I'm personally very grateful for all of your service, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public, please.
My name's Brant Parker, I'm not an engineer on roads, but I do, my main hobby is driving. And as soon as-
That's quite a hobby.
Yeah, lots of miles put in, and cruising Maine is a pastime of mine for sure.
Could you pick another street, not Main Street?
Yeah, not Main Street.
We have plenty of cars on it.
So I, I am addicted to soda, so I, I go down to Bullock Drug for my addiction, so as soon as they started framing, I call them turtles, the median on 200, I started reaching out to the city engineers who pushed me to UDOT. UDOT didn't have the project posted online because it was too small, and so I just got transferred around trying to get someone from UDOT. I have videos and photos if council are interested, but the, the main concern that I have is the turtle cuts in at the white line of this left-hand turn to go north, so turtle cuts in here and stops here, and before the turtle, like I said, I'm addicted to Bullock Drug here, when you're turning off of 100 West, the left-hand turn lane would stack up to back, about here, and now that there's a turtle in the way, I stood there from 4:30 to 5:15, there were more cars in the left-hand turn lane than any of the other three lanes, and it backed up to here and is now blocking this turn, this straight line, straight road. And as that gets blocked, the traffic fills the right-hand lane, and as that gets filled, that blocks the right-hand turn, so then traffic is blocking 100 West fully in all three lanes. And like I said, I didn't catch it before they poured the concrete today, but this is going to be a big issue, it's going to be worse than Walmart, in my opinion, just because that left-hand turn lane is going to be stacked and block 100 North. Just before the meeting, I talked with Kent, and he said that they were trying to do less than 50/50 for that turtle so that 100 West could still get left-hand turns going south, but it's leaning, not 50/50 in my opinion, and then also as the traffic gets backed up, no one's going to be able to turn left on 100 West anyway. So again, I'm not an engineer, but my recommendation would be to move the turtle all the way back to 100 West and just not allow people to turn left into 100 West when they're trying to go south. Again, in my addiction, I go south on Main Street, and then once I get to Bullock Drug, I turn, or actually into Snap Fitness, then I turn onto that one-way street there, and then if anyone's trying to get to the parking lots, that's what they would, would do, just from a, a car enthusiast.
Mr. Parker, I'm not an engineer either.
Yep.
But I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
When I drove by there today, I saw that, I said, that is not going to be nearly long enough.
Yeah, I'm-
And if we think we have problems on the south interchange, just wait.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there, like I said, I go there nine in the morning when they open, I've been there at 11, I've been there at 1, I've been there at 4, 6, and no matter what hour, traffic would fill that left-hand turn lane all the way back, and now that there's a turtle, it's just blocking traffic, so.
So I don't know what, if anything, can even be done about this, but it is going to be a problem.
So as we, we're working with UDOT on this as part of the Maverick proposal, there was agreement from them, and, and really, we're going to be seeing more of these medians, you know?
Oh, I don't have a problem with the median.
They're coming, there's going to be a lot of them, but you know, the, the discussion was, let's try to minimize how long the turn bay is to turn onto 100 West, give as much as we can to the, to the eastbound, to northbound left turn. That is one thing we need to look at, out in the field, did that get built according to what was anticipated there, from, from what Parker's saying, that seems like it maybe didn't, that was something we will certainly check out. But yeah, this is something that, you know, could be subject to change in the future if, if that need is- That was something we will certainly check out. But yeah, this is something that, uh, you know, could be subject to change in the future if, uh, if that need is identified. We'll, we'll work with UDOT on that.
Okay, thank you.
I had the same thought when I just drove by that coming here.
What's your name, sir?
Sorry, this is Steve Nelson. Good to see you, Carter. Glad you could make it. Is it possible, I know they, I remember they did a survey about the potentially even adding two turn lanes. So you use that second lane to also turn left or go, go straight, 'cause you don't have as much traffic going through that intersection. And then you still have one going forward and going straight and one turning right. Is that part of the potential discussion to make sure that that isn't an issue?
Um, possibly. So in, in the study that UDOT did on that, um. Wh- what they found was that that dual left didn't provide as much benefit as we might think. It, and it, it wasn't an easily implementable solution, 'cause it requires widening the roadway. That's a much more involved project. A costly project, and so that wasn't going to happen in the timeframe we were looking at here. And that's why just a median curb went in. But, but what they found is with some of the other things that adding the dual left does to the operation of the intersection, it kind of offsets the benefit of the left turn. The, uh, the cost benefit came out very low for building those improvements. So I don't think that's something that UDOT's gonna wanna pursue anytime soon. That could change, though, you know.
Yeah, when they see that backed up to two hundred west, they might change their mind, 'cause it, I think it is gonna be a problem.
Well, and I think people are being more careful with the construction there, so I drive through every year and I, every day, and I think, uh. I think people are more cautious when they see all, and so it just has been slower in that regard, so I think when it gets built out, it might get used to it and. Zip around there.
I think what's gonna happen is a lot of people are gonna go in if they use it and they fill up their tank or get their coffee or whatever it is. And they're gonna, no, they can't turn left, so they're gonna go out the backside to one hundred west. And they'll try it a time or two, but you're absolutely right. They won't be able to turn left. So they'll end up going to Third West, or they'll go down to Center Street.
Or turn right and go back around again.
Yeah, exactly, 'cause they're not gonna, they're not gonna go through, uh, Main Street and flip a U-turn to get back to the freeway or wherever they're going.
Yeah, and my concern is Maverick's not operational right now, and so just the everyday traffic would back up that left-hand turn lane. And so if we add Maverick on it, then it's, it's just worse.
Yep. Kent, are they doing a median down Main Street as well right there?
Yes, yeah, and that's what they had started construction on.
I saw that today.
As Scott mentioned, the contractor is gonna fill in the one hole that they have there now. So that it, uh, is functional for the, for the events this weekend, um, and then they'll finish that project. But yes, it will extend from the intersection down to, um, just north of Hoover Avenue.
Just north. Past, oh, just north.
Yeah, so that the northbound traffic on Main Street will still be able to turn on to Hoover Avenue, but there will not be access. Left turn access to any of the driveways north of Hoover.
Okay.
So again, driving, so, uh, left-hand turn lane backs up to about right here. Um, that one doesn't back up as often, but it has occurred. Uh, so if you're stopping at Hoover, if it curves the same way they did that. If they stop at Hoover, it's gonna actually start about right there, um, which then is again, having the same issue where it's gonna block the northbound lane on, on Main Street.
I don't think this one has the jog, right? This'll just be.
No, this one, this one would be straight. Stay on the west side of the median, so that would be left turn lane for turning on to two hundred north all the way back to Hoover.
That's what I thought.
The idea is a right-in, right-out of Maverick to, in, to help the traffic flow. That was the.
To stop people from trying to turn left out on the main.
So, so the, right now where it blocks, where you can't get in the turn lane, it's not gonna have that at Hoover. You could get in the turn lane all the way.
Right.
Correct, yep, yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment?
And just so you know, the plan for, they mentioned it briefly, the south interchange at Maverick, or at Walmart. Every road will have a median in it, so there'll only be right-ins and right-outs for that entire area.
And it is in the works to be changed, but it just takes time.
I got a public comment, but it's, it's back to Mayor Green's.
Just take your name, please.
If I can, Sean Wharton. This is in regards to mandatory mental health. Um, and I adopted seven kids out of this system at one time. And those kids, the state recommended, um, all of them go to, you know, some counseling and they, and get looked at. And if we had really been mandatory instead of optional. I just know without a doubt in my mind the benefit it would have been to these children. Um, every single one of those kids has, you know, had a really, really rough life, and. They, they all needed the counseling, and they all fought. Like if they, no, there's nothing wrong with me. I can't go, you know. Uh, over and over and over, and, and we're parents, and we're like, okay, well, we're not going. It's too hard to get you to go there, right? But if the state or somebody says, this is mandatory, your kid's gotta go in and get psychologically evaluated. Um, then I can say, I don't have a choice, guys. If, you know, we're gonna eat dinner, we're going. And, and the, the difference that it would have made is, you just can't imagine. I mean, it's, each one of those kids' lives would have been improved fifty percent. I mean, the, 'cause those, those, those problems that kids carry with them their whole life are, are not okay. Um, so just thought it was a great idea. Love your, uh, your, your agenda there, your, your, your draft that you put, whatever it's called, but I support it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any others? We'll move on to the public, uh, business agenda then. Item number one. Public hearing to consider a general plan change from low density to medium density, from low density to high density, from median density to low density. Medium density to high density, medium density to high density, and high density to medium density in the vicinity. Of eight hundred north to thirty-seven hundred west. I had to practice that.
I'm glad you did. Mike Plot, Pl- 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 Engineering. Yeah, this is the, almost to the finish line with this. Our old general plans are color-coded, and now we're basically flipping those vertical, so it aligns with our development agreement.
Number of units, essentially, everything's the same with the development agreement. Number of units stays the same. Is the acreage roughly the same?
Very, very close. I'd say within a hundredth of an acre.
Okay.
The, the acreage change is really more from the road elimination.
Yeah, well, and it's, I mean, I don't care if the acreage changes, if the units are the same, that's really what.
Yeah.
Can you, uh, can you play in the colors? I just wanna make sure I understand the map we're looking at.
Yeah.
I spent a lot of time on this today.
So, um, each color has a number associated with it. If you scroll down. That corresponds with the old general plan to the left.
Maybe.
There's, there, yeah, excuse me. There's, there's, the colors correspond to those old existing zones and general plans.
Okay. So starting left to right, let's just, one, two, three, four, left to right. Orange becomes which one?
This is, this is R one.
That's new orange.
Yep.
The top and bottom.
Top and bottom.
Thank you.
This is R two one, top and bottom.
So that is what color originally?
That was the orange.
That was the green, so green becomes the second section.
Yep. And then this is the RNZ.
So yellow becomes the third section.
Yep, and this is your R two.
And blue becomes the fourth section.
Okay. I would not change anything in B.
Not change anything in B or A. That all stays the same.
Please, sorry, please note when you're discussing these as well, the other items that go along with it, two, one, two, and three are all together. Um, general plan, zone change, and development agreement.
Well, we'll be voting on that way next week?
It's really up to how you do it. It's just for saving your discussion time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just one public hearing for all three items.
Yeah.
So I think I know the answer, but will you explain to us the reasoning behind the shift?
Yes, when we first brought this through, what, two or three, four years ago, and it was presented to the city, eight hundred north wasn't even built. It was a master plan road at the time, but it wasn't, it wasn't built.
Correct.
And, uh, thanks to Mr. Phil Schmidt, who came in and did Amber Industrial and working with our developers, they built eight hundred north. And now that allowed them to eliminate Walt's Way, which would have been the master plan road at, at that time, and use.
The one that does that, that did that jog that we vacated.
Yep, and actually used the master plan road that was presented to, that the city's been presented to everybody since when it was adopted. And it gave them to allow frontage on those master plan roads, and so that's why we could run the, um, parcels north and south now. And to me, this, this makes sense. If you scroll to the west. We have the Ironcrest subdivision, which is R one, so now we're sticking R one next to R one. I don't know how this was zoned, R two two, but there was no general plan or zone change that we were ever aware of, but that's what the current zone was. But then it just feathers out to Lund Highway from low density to high density to commercial.
Commercial.
Makes sense to do it that way.
What about the north?
The north?
It's a vacant field.
Vacant field.
But what do you.
I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, with how public this zoning map, I don't know what zone that is.
I'm sorry?
I don't know what zone that is.
Could we look at that?
Yeah, Brett's the neighbor directly to the north.
So it isn't quite a vacant field.
I know it's a field right now. I just wanna know what it's currently zoned.
Currently zoned Anex transition, yeah.
Anex transition.
What's it master planned? I mean, there's kind of a lot of stuff out there, so it could be who knows what. So it's master planned R one, R one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's against R two one and R two one above, okay.
I mean, it's a large enough piece that I imagine when it comes through or whatever, it'll, it'll be multiple, it'll be different zonings, 'cause it's a large enough piece. You wouldn't do all in one zone necessarily.
So I've heard a, a lot of discussion, Mr. Plot, about connectivity.
Yes.
Can you maybe elaborate a bit on that?
So if we go back to the zone map.
Cool.
Our zone map that we presented.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have some curb cuts along eight hundred north that are designated, they're not shown on here, but I believe one's about right there. I wanna say the other two are somewhere in this vicinity.
Okay.
But they're gonna allow connectivity from eight hundred north into the developments. And then once we get into the developments, I'll work with Kent on the layouts, is how, how do we best feed people inside the development? Because what we don't want to happen is someone to build a home here and then come clear out to eight hundred north to get to this area right here. Let's, let's put some internal roads. Let's make it nice. Let's make it all continuous and work that way.
And per our ordinance, the only, the only bordering two different zones that would ever require, that would require a fence would be between A and B, correct? Way down. Meaning, the way you've done it, there would be, there's no fence required between the different zones, so these could just be, there could be roads going all the way through this way also.
It's a perfect feathering.
Yeah.
So the wording that was added in the previous, um, amendment to the development agreement. That included wording for connectivity east-west between the parcels, and also for some connectivity to the north into that other property as it develops. This, the, the third item is the development agreement, and that would all, would still preserve that language that, uh, was in the last amendment. So we would still have that, that would require that connectivity.
What about to the west, I mean, Ironcrest? I mean, is there any plan to, is this master planned out? Would there be any, any road connections there?
Right now, no, because.
There's all the backyards.
It's a U shape.
It's a U shape.
Oh, it's a U shape.
Touch that, so it makes sense, yeah.
Gotcha, so it'd be people's backyard, drive-through backyard.
But at this, at this Empire subdivision.
Right.
We, we do have a road coming up here, and they have a road right in this area that will lead, that, that we could tie into.
That you could tie into.
Oh, yeah. We'll have to re-dedicate it, 'cause we vacated it, but we don't know how it's gonna lay out as well.
I mean, eight, eight hundred is a, is a beautiful road, and it's, I've been on it, and it looks great. I just know that when this is fully developed, there'll be a lot of traffic coming on that, and I know Amber, your, your other project could have a lot of other traffic on it as well. So we just gotta make sure that we don't have everything feeding in there.
Yeah, and that's why this interconnectivity is so important, so we can, so these people within the development can stay within the development to visit who they wanna.
Yeah, and you've got nine hundred north up there that hopefully.
And nine hundred north is still, that's still gonna stay dedicated, and it will serve the R three and the commercial zones right in there.
So you don't think it'll come in right there? It'll end there, or you think it'll come into the subdivision nine hundred north?
When that lays out, we will, well, I think right now, this nine hundred north turns and, and will eventually turn and go south. As far as going west, I don't know until we lay something out.
Yeah, oh, okay.
It would make some sense.
Make some sense.
It would make some sense to have it go in.
Utilize that, yeah.
'Cause it gets people back out to.
It'll get you out to Lund Highway.
I mean, that's the problem, yeah, over in Hunter Glen is, we have one exit, yeah. Anytime you can get a road going out to Lund is a lot better. Same thing with Questering. They can't get to Lund directly. You have to go to sixteen hundred.
There is a master planned road out of it, through that, Alpha Field.
So that's all the questions I have.
Huh?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Well, we gotta put on a public hearing for all three, don't we?
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
Should I read them all, the three? How do you wanna do that?
Sure.
So the second one, will also be a public hearing. We'll do the public hearings all together. Public hearing to consider zone change from R one to R two one, R one to RN, R two one to R two two, R two one to RN, R two two to R. One, R two two to R two one, R two two to RN, RN to R two two, and to, in the vicinity of eight hundred north and seven, thirty-seven hundred west. Add a public hearing. Number three, a public hearing to consider an ordinance submitting the development agreement for a property located approximately eight hundred north, thirty-seven hundred west.
Go ahead, no.
Should we open the public hearing?
Uh, Phil Schmidt, we have the project just to the south of that, uh, the developers, and Sean's here. We worked together to get eight hundred done, so the master plan for this part would actually, that should count as a master plan road, so I, I think that should be fine. We're, uh, a hundred percent agreement with what they're trying to do. We don't have any issues with that. And, uh, I think it's a, it's a good project, and Sean has been great in helping us, and we've worked well together, so I, I'm a hundred percent for the project. I just can't stay for the whole meeting. I have another thing I have to go to, so I just wanted to say I am for this. Thank you.
Phil, I haven't had a chance to drive it yet. Does the new eight hundred west or north connect to the old eight hundred north? Does it go all the way through?
I'm not gonna tell you, Carter, until you get your butt out there and go look at it.
I need, I drive past it every day. I just haven't made the turn.
It ties thirty-seven to thirty-nine.
That road is awesome.
Beautiful road all the way through.
Good.
Carter, it does go all the way through. One, one day from thirty-seven hundred to thirty-nine hundred will have to be improved.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the Empire subdivision will come along, but if they don't, that's something the city, some, somebody's gonna have to do that, but yes, it ties all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing.
Let's put this on action, Mayor, for items one, two, and three.
Can I just say, just real quick for the record, the planning commission did vote to give a positive recommendation on all three of these last night.
Oh, that's right.
So that was not in your packets, 'cause we didn't know that when I created the packet, but it's positive. They didn't ask for any additional conditions. They just gave positive recommendations.
I guess since we don't have the minutes from that, was there much public?
The, the public was not present for this last meeting. They, nobody showed up for it.
Okay.
It was, it was a twelve-minute total meeting. It was really quick. Um, so all the public discussion that happened, you had in your packets.
Thank you.
Well, and where the infrastructure demand is the same, it's, it's a no-brainer, I mean.
Well, actually, I think this is a much better plan, yes.
Great. Item number four, public hearing to consider a general plan change from highway regional commercial to central commercial in the vicinity of eleven fifty-seven South Main. And probably the number five as well, public hearing to consider zone change from residential dwelling. Two-unit, R two two, to central commercial CC in the vicinity of eleven fifty-seven South Main.
And this one, as you can see, not much, nothing has changed from when the planning commission dealt with it. They gave a positive recommendation. The only real comments from the public that came in on this one, if you saw, didn't have much to do with that property itself. Their concerns were trying to get back onto Main Street, um, because.
From that piece of property or?
Not from that piece of property. That's what I mean. It's not really directly related to the one you're dealing with. That whole subdivision right there, um, tries to turn left onto Main Street on occasion, and, and you can guess how poorly that goes for them. Um, so they're begging that the developer of this whole project will have a way to, for them to get through. We don't really have any way to require that, but the developers promised they'll, they'll look at it and see if there's a way that they can help. Um, there's just no way to guarantee it.
Yeah, and really, the zone change, this one piece. Yeah, and really, the zone change, this one piece that we're talking about, it's the, it's the Geiger Auto Sales piece. That's the piece that's now being added, that's this.
Well, it also squares up that property, so it can be fully developed.
And it's surrounded by commercial.
And it's surrounded by commercial.
So even though it was zoned R2-2, it was already general planned highway?
Correct.
Okay. So it must have, okay.
So the next page shows the zoning, a portion of that is already zoned central commercial.
Correct.
The remainder of it is zoned R2-2, so the proposal is to, to change the general plan for that whole portion to the central commercial, and then change the portion that isn't currently central commercial to central commercial in the zoning.
And we, our ordinance does not prefer, does not like residential lots that don't have direct access to a street. They actually have to go to Board of Adjustments to even build a house on it, so.
Yeah, it's kind of-
This matches closer to a current general plan just by making it commercial, but also gets rid of that problem of a landlocked residential property.
That's weird, that, that leaves the back of, what's the plumbing supply right there?
Standard. Standard plumbing.
They're still zoned R2-2, that's a little weird, but whatever.
Well, they aren't, just the back part of that property is.
Well, that's-
Do they own that whole piece through there?
No, I don't think so.
Well, then that's a landlocked piece back there? Yeah, that's-
No, that doesn't look like there's access, it's like this is online.
You can go right through there or right there.
To get to this?
You're talking the piece behind, though.
I'm talking about the piece behind standard.
Back to the, kind of the southeast a little bit.
Yeah, I'm saying, Standard owns all that back there. Or whoever owns that building.
That's all one parcel.
Oh, okay.
All the way back to here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, they're fine. It's all one property owner.
Yeah, they said they didn't, so I was curious.
This was the corner that was not zoned, changed.
Yeah.
No, this, I think this makes sense.
Should we open the public hearing now? Seeing no one?
Oh.
Oops, there is one.
So I don't know the process, but since that property is all one, wouldn't that need to be read also, and just do the zoning change at the same time?
Well, that's up to the property owner if that's what he wants to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would make sense.
He probably will, because it would make sense, but he's got to be the one to request that.
If they ever go to put something on it, they're going to have to get a building permit, and they're going to have to get a zone change at that point. Yeah.
Good evening, Rick Magnus with AWA Engineering, I made the drive, I want to say hi.
Absolutely.
So I represent the applicant, the applicant just wanted to make their property a little more agreeable to everything that's going on around it. And yes, where that R-2-2 is, that's just qualities, excess parcel. It happens that out in here, there was a kind of an arbitrary line drawn for commercial and then remaining residential. And this happens with general plans and that all the time. So, we're just here representing the applicant, we agree, we concur with staff recommendations, we enjoy working with staff, I want it publicly known as well, and they're, they're a really good group, so we look forward to working with this owner, and we'll see what happens to that piece in the future, you know, so. Anyway, I'm here, I concur with staff recommendations and just here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Magnus.
Thanks for making the drive.
It was pleasant.
Okay.
Mayor, I move that we put this on action.
Yep. Just a comment before we start the staff, Natasha told Keith Naylor to come next week, so that's why he's not here tonight, but you'll meet him next week if you don't know who he is.
Who?
He's the-
Keith Naylor, Naylor, Naylor. He's not on the agenda, he's, he's being appointed to the Board of Adjustments Monday afternoon and-
What's the name?
Keith Naylor. He's replacing Terry Hermanson.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that I understand, because it is two separate items, we did cover four and five in this discussion, I just want that clarified, right?
If we did.
Thank you.
Staff, item number six, Mr. Whiskey, so the purchase of a 2026 International Plow Truck chassis for $172,056.47.
Eric Whiskey, Street Department. So Randall has schooled me on the proper way to do this, so I'm here at his request. This was a truck that was purchased or that was approved on this year's city budget. I've ordered the truck, it's been, the chassis has been delivered, it's a snowplow. I just need to get the documents signed so that I can pay for the chassis and have the body put on it.
And because of the cost of it, you need to come and, even though it's in the budget, right?
Okay, so the orig, the approved budget was for $320,000, the chassis is $172,056.47.
Okey dokey.
Okay.
But by the time you have the rest of it, it becomes?
It will be right, actually, it'll be short of 320.
So let me ask you this, is there any way we can just approve the body and the plow at the same time, so he doesn't have to come back and ask for that then?
There's not going to be a contract on the, on the body, that'll just be a PO, is that going to be necessary?
How much does it cost?
It's going to be about-
It'll be a little bit less, probably closer to 115.
Yeah, you'd have to kind of like-
Can we just do it all now?
Can we do it?
Oh.
We don't know the exact to the penny.
The difference here is you guys approved it before budgetarily, now we're approving the contract. So are purchasing, are requirements for contracts and who can sign, anything over 50s requires your approval for the contract.
Yeah, that's fine, we always like seeing Mr. Whiskey, yeah.
You could change your purchasing policy and who signs what. You could, I mean, that's something we could explore to make that change and make it quicker and easier. Prior councils, when we did the purchasing policy, still wanted it more expensive items brought back to them for their consideration and approval or rejection. This council doesn't have to operate that way, we could change that if we want.
Well, it's just in this case, if you've got the chassis, you've got to have the rest of it to make it work.
This is true.
I understand where on some items you might approve this, and then a whole separate item is another budget, but in this case, you got to have one and you can't have the other.
But what they're saying is we don't have the contract on the, to the exact, any, so, but, okay.
Put that on consent?
For sure.
Consent, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, consider road dedication of 100 East, south of 900 North.
So this item, just to orient you to this, north is to the left on the way this particular drawing is oriented. 900 North sits here, 100 East. The property to the, you know, to the west here is the piece that Tom Jett has the lease on. Before that lease was, was redone, we did pull, you know, separate out a parcel here that we needed for right-of-way. This, this line right here was the parcel line of that parcel. We do have some here that is already separated from that parcel, but this was a, a street dedication plat to, you know, formally dedicate this as public road, and, and also to dedicate the easements, on the public utility easements on either side of that.
How wide of a road is it?
It is a, we kind of went a little bit of a, of a custom configuration on this, it's 65 feet, to accommodate what we were trying to do with the path on the one side. It is, the pavement width corresponds with our 55-foot right-of-way.
Which gets us what usually, I apologize, I don't know.
Forty feet from lip and gutter.
But meaning, how many lanes in each direction?
That, yeah, we, we can, we could get technically up to four lanes on that with no parking allowed. A more, really what we would, would do is run that as just a two-lane street with allowed-on-street parking, but if they need for additional, you know, center turn lane came up in the future, then there would need to be parking removed to accommodate it.
So two lanes, but no center lane?
We would not initially propose to stripe a center lane, right, but it, but that could be with some parking restriction, that could be added in the future.
But this is the piece that's going to be chip sealed and not going to have any curbs?
No, 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 this is, this is a full size.
But the rest of it going to the south will be?
So, so from, from 900 North to the south, we're, we'll be putting out to bid the full roadway. So to, to the left or to the north on here is where we would be doing the chip seal road.
So just so you know, to accommodate consideration of both projects, what we've asked engineering to do is complete the design all the way to Knoll Street, bid out the portion from 900 back south to 675, and bid out that portion that we were considering doing a double chip seal that connects to Knoll Street as an add-alternative.
To see?
And, yeah, we'll see what budget numbers we get back, and we'll see how far we can get. Or we'll see if we need to come and ask the council for additional funding.
Because isn't the idea to hurry and get this bid and get a contract signed so that we can be one of the first projects of the year next year when the asphalt plant's reopened?
With chip seal.
It's, the, the idea is to get it so we can, I don't know if we want to be the first one, but we can get it when the asphalt plant's open in the spring.
Mr. Fugel, I'm really interested in this project, because I haven't seen drawings, but how is it tying in to 675 to the south? Because it is a wider road once you get to the, past that point, so I'm just interested in how that's, how that's all going to tie in.
Yeah, so let me go ahead and pull a map up.
And do the property owners then have to do their curb gutter sidewalk?
So there are, there are curb gutter sidewalk improvements that are required on the southwest plumbing area here, where they would, will be participating in the cost of this project through the agreements that are in place on that. The, or excuse me, up here, I was in the wrong spot. Once we get to 675, and really, it'd be a little more accurate to say we're going to 625, at least to some extent.
I would hope so.
As we're trying to bring the path all the way down to 625. And then at that point, we do have that, you know, wide roadway, a lot of shoulder to be able to utilize there. But we're, but we do have full road construction coming down into this area. And then, you know, of course, we're coming through the Forest Service property, and then this is the, the portion that we're talking about tonight for the roadway dedication plat. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Well, I think you did mostly, but what happens to the property owners between 675 and 6-
And 775.
600.
Oh.
Because that is not improved on the backside of those properties. Right there.
Yeah, there are some improvements here, there are not improvements here, no, we were, we were not proposing to build all of that at this time.
So we're just going to have a funny little patch there that's unfinished? Because everything else is finished.
Yeah, I guess as we looked at that, we thought there's, there's certainly potential of additional development occurring on that parcel that could bring those improvements along in the future. If not, that's something that we could budget to do, or if the bids come in really good and we can, can change order that in, we will.
And I'm assuming it'd be the same thing between 675 and 775, right, nothing's going to happen on the west side of the road?
The, the west side of the road here, yes, that is being fully improved, and there are agreements in place with the Southwest Plumbing property that they have participation in that.
Oh, okay.
Is that the white line where your cursor is right now and you drop it down, is that the property line or is that the road?
That's the property line.
This here is the property line.
Okay.
That separates the driving range from the road.
Just want to make sure that our Quonset hut is still safe on that little edge right there.
Yeah.
Well, those property lines are approximations on these maps, or, please don't take them as gospel.
Okay.
As we, as we have laid it out, where the, where the path will come through, there is some, some cut slope that will extend back towards the Quonset hut, but we, but we'll, we'll be able to save the Quonset hut. Now, the Conex box that's out there will have to be relocated somewhere.
Oh, darn.
Yeah, I know, I thought you'd be really disappointed with that. But the, but yeah, the, we can, we can make that work with the Quonset hut where it is.
Okay. One last question, Kent, where does the road, where does the curve, the S, I guess, where does that kind of start roughly?
So it, it starts right about in here and starts to swing over. So, of course, in conjunction with this roadway project, there is also the money that was budgeted for some additional fencing for the driving range, the tall fencing.
Right.
And so that will follow the road down through here as well. For the most part, we're not going to be touching the existing prairie dog fence there that goes down deep to keep the prairie dogs from burrowing underneath. We will get into that a little bit up in this area, just because there's part of that prairie dog fence that will now be out in the road, and so we'll have to do a little bit of rework of that in that area there.
Obviously, those structures right where your mouse almost is, those all have to come down.
They're gone.
They're gone, they're gone.
This, this one's gone, that one can stay.
We saved one for, we can use it to store it, as a storage shed.
And then go, okay.
That building stays too.
Yeah, these buildings stay, this one, I believe, is already gone, yeah.
Wow, we're really squeezing a road right between a lot of things, aren't we?
They knew that 10 years ago.
What is that building right above your mouse right now?
That's a, it's a storage building, a shop building that the BLM used to use, and our golf course is going to move into as soon as we can figure out what we want to do with it.
Oh, okay.
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 Is this something that-
Can that go on consent?
Can that go on consent?
Yes.
You guys okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Item number eight, discussion on the wastewater effluent reuse study.
Jonathan South, the City Engineering Department. We have a project budgeted this fiscal year to do a study on the effluent reuse. The project's going along very well out at the treatment plant with the new building and the disc filter units. So we're hoping in the next few months that that project's going to be done, and this will have good type-one wastewater that we can start using. The issue now is, of course, we're going to need to build a pump station, pipeline, and another infrastructure to get that water into town and be able to use it. And so this study would, would be looking at all those infrastructure items that are needed to, to use the, the type-one effluent. One issue that we've been running into, and we wanted to get the city council's take on this, is that should we look at a full citywide secondary irrigation system to use that wastewater, or should we just expand the, the city's parcel system that's currently in place? So currently, if you look on the map here, the city's secondary system currently serves the golf course, and that comes from the cemetery well. It serves the bicentennial park, serves Canyon View High School, SUU, Cedar High School.
That's through Lake at the Hill, right?
So it, it comes through, yes. So most of those are fed from the Lake at the Hills. The golf course is solely served by the cemetery well, so the golf course is not served by the Lake at the Hills.
Okay.
They have their own storage up on, up on the golf.
And that large pond we built with the golf course, that's just for retention?
No, it is, it is for storage for irrigation.
It is for irrigation?
Yes.
So it is the well and that that feeds the golf course?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, but that, that's fed by the well, the well feeds that pond, correct?
Yes, the well feeds that, that pond, yes.
Thank you. But it's non-collinary water.
Correct.
Correct.
Can't swim in it.
Yeah.
So the well at the cemetery feeds the Lake at the Hill and that?
No.
No.
Oh.
Just the cemetery.
No, just, just the golf course.
The golf course. Yeah, the cemetery, just, the cemetery well feeds the golf course.
And which well feeds the Lake at the Hill?
Northfield well. So the city has a well just right here, just across Si 15 from, from Canyon View High School.
We send it from there all the way to Lake at the Hill?
Yes. Yes.
Wow.
So, what feeds the-
Yes.
What feeds the cemetery?
The Northfield well and the Lake at the Hills.
Really?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we use the cemetery well to feed the cemetery?
The golf course pretty much takes all of it.
Oh.
Yeah, so there, it's pretty much just dedicated to the-
Wow, it's right there by the cemetery.
Yeah. It used to, it did use to feed the cemetery, but now the golf course takes it, takes all of it.
Great.
So, at least that's how it's operating right now, again, and this is, and that's going to all be part of the study to say, okay, can we optimize that? Can we, part of the, part of the problem with the cemetery well is that it's very hard water.
Yes.
The TDS is incredibly high, and so a lot of the customers don't like to use it, so.
And you don't want to put that on headstones either. Well, it's just, it's just-
Hard water.
Watermarks on those headstones.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would look bad.
Perfect for it.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, the- So, so anyway, the cemetery well has been used for, it's been used to serve the university and the cemetery different times, but most of those customers have just said, we don't, we don't want to use it anymore because it's, it's such hard water. But, but the golf course uses it and they seem to, they're okay with it. And it, it goes to feed those storage ponds. They, they actually have two storage ponds, the new one and then there's the one up on the, uh, back nine as well. The, Lake at the Hills is also augmented with, with culinary water to some extent. It's not a whole lot, but it does get some, a little bit of culinary. So what we're looking at is, this would be a, this is just one concept of what an expanded, uh, partial secondary system would look like. The main backbone or the, it's, it's a twelve-inch water line runs right along I fifteen and that's, that's existing. So that runs all the way from the Northfield well all the way up to the Lake at the Hills. One thing we looked at was, okay, well, what if we start adding more customers, especially out, you know, along Center Street, the Little League ball fields? And then even going back out to, um.
Iron.
Iron West. Um, there's, there'd be some customers along Cross Hall Road, along Cove Drive.
So are we talking large, like park?
Yes.
Customers, not individual users?
Yeah, so this would just go to the large customers like churches, parks.
University, school.
Yep. And so we identified all those larger customers and then you can see all these different numbers that identify different customers that can be served. Right now, the secondary irrigation s- system, it serves just under two hundred acres of, of turf. Which, and last year we, um, we used eight hundred acre feet, um, in the secondary.
So we used about six hundred acre feet of culinary water?
No, eight hundred acre feet of, uh, secondary water on the, on those two hundred acres.
Okay.
Which is about four acre feet per acre, which is.
There's a lot of numbers going around here.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers.
Some of that is also culinary water, but that's, how much are you used?
Yeah, yes.
For those, those places?
Yeah. Most of it is secondary water, again, coming from the cemetery well and the Northfield well. But, um, so by expanding the, the secondary system, we could increase that, the number of acres to three hundred and thirty acres. And that would come out to be about thirteen hundred acre feet that could be used. Now, if you look at the amount of wastewater that's available, um, Kent, could you maybe pull up the, there, there should be a present, a presentation under this item? Go to the next.
Do you want to use your clicker there, Jonathan?
Oh, yeah. So just to give you a little bit of an overview, so the city used just over nine thousand acre feet. And overall in the city, there was almost five thousand acre feet used for outdoor irrigation.
How do you, I guess, how do you know that number?
So that was just, that was just an estimate that I came up with. I, I looked at the average winter use in the, in the city.
Oh, that makes sense.
And then I, and then I.
Look at the difference in the middle of summer and that tells you roughly, okay.
Yeah, it's, these are just rough numbers, they're not exact, but, but I did, I did look at the winter use and then took the difference during the summer.
So we're almost fifty-fifty?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit more outdoor use than indoor use, but yeah. And then this is what I was talking about with the eight hundred acre feet from secondary and then with over four thousand from culinary. Now, this is, this is the whole city, so this is every residence.
Sure.
You know, every, all the parks, everything. So if we look at the effluent that's available, there's about thirty-four hundred acre feet that's available. Over time, we've looked at, well, the city's gonna get approximately eighty percent of that. This, any contributes ten percent, the county, uh, water conservancy district contributes ten percent. So this would be about the city's portion that would be available. If you include the two wells, the cemetery well and the Northfield well, we have approximately forty-six hundred acre feet that could be used if we add all those together. And then these are the numbers that I was talking about, just under two hundred acres is currently irrigated on the partial city system and then we could expand that to three hundred and thirty acres. So just, just to kind of summarize here, um, the total outdoor use in the city is just a little less than five thousand acre feet currently. The partial system use, uses eight hundred acre feet and then we could expand it to thirteen hundred acre feet. But the twenty-seven hundred acre feet available, if you average, or if you take half of that, which would be six months. So one issue we have with the effluent is that.
Where do we put it in the winter?
Where do we, yeah, exactly, exactly.
I imagine that's gonna be a big part of their study, correct?
Yes.
Is to tell us what they, we should do with it in the winter or recommendations on what we should do with it in the winter?
Yes.
I think it's a big one.
Will part of the study be able to, you know, not only tell us how to do it, but it will have a cost estimate to it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's one thing I don't have currently.
No, I understand.
Well, I think, in my opinion, it becomes a two, two-step process. Uh, the, the lower, lower hanging fruit is going to be to take the water from the, so, in the summer months that comes out of the plant and use it for irrigation. The, the second step will be how to, uh, store it and then to use the increased, how we use that increased storage then throughout the city.
For sure. So Jonathan, one question that I have is, because it really is not good that we put culinary water into Lake at the Hill, but, so part of me says, we'll just take some of that effluent and put it into Lake at the Hill, but where people swim and recreate at Lake at the Hill, is that a possibility? Or is it recommended we don't do that? Can we even do that?
Well, that's gonna be part of the study, that'll be part of the study as well. We've, we've looked at that a little bit, we know we're, we're gonna have to treat for phosphorus in order to do that.
Okay.
But even that, we're, I'm still not sure exactly if we're gonna be able to or not.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's definitely gonna be part of the study, so.
Because getting away from putting culinary Lake at the Hill would definitely be good, but at what cost?
I know.
Yeah.
Me too.
So, and then the other question I was gonna ask was, because you, you came to us with the question of, do you want us to look at a more comprehensive or kind of a more?
Correct.
The question I have is, what did you put into the budget? Were you planning on a more comprehensive or were you planning on a more basic?
With the.
I don't remember how much we budgeted for it.
Yeah, with the funding we have now, it's probably a more basic. Yeah, I would probably just be looking at the, at the partial city system. If we wanted to look at a full s- citywide system, that, there's probably gonna be additional cost.
I'm not sure we can afford to do that. I mean, no matter what the plan says, but I, I don't know that, it's gonna be millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Well, and something, something I would really like to look, and now's not the time to have the full discussion, but I would like us to start looking into ways to, you know, have possibly developers participate in some of the cost and getting it out to them and giving them credits on water if they build their own secondary irrigation system using ours.
Open space, parks.
Well, or, yeah, or even if they want to take it all the way to the law, I mean, they can do that, they can plum every lot with a, if they want to do that at a cost and save on their water acquisition cost and, you know, it's a trade-off. So I don't know, there's lots of discussions to be had here, I think.
Well, potentially a irrigation, uh, reservoir where they can store it and then use it in the summer for farmers, right? I mean.
Yeah, if.
Just gotta get it up to high ground somewhere.
Yeah, if we do, if we just expand the partial system, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some excess. And so could that excess go to farmers or could it go to recharge? You know, there's, there's a few questions with recharge, regulatory questions that would need to be answered.
Yeah, it'd be super nice to take the winter stuff and put it into a recharge and get credit, but we wouldn't get, or would we get credit?
I think we could if, if we can get it up to the water quality standards that they're asking for, which is almost to drinking water standards. So we'd have to do additional treatment, probably.
Is this something that we need to put out to bid or do we have a person that would be doing this study already in, on, in our, uh, portfolio?
Hanson Allen and Lucian's already signed up to get it studied.
Okay.
They're just, they're to the point in the study where they're saying.
They say, do you want to look at us partially expanding or full citywide?
Yeah, what's the scope?
Doing what's right.
Well, I think we should look at, personally, I think we should look at the partial system.
I think that's where we need to go, is a partial system to use what we can at the present time, which is.
Particularly for these larger areas that are identified and try and get more of our churches and large spaces looked at.
So if I could jump in on that, uh, that issue, part of the reason this came up, do we look at just the more of a backbone system or do we look at a full system? Comes from my previous experience. I was, uh, uh, working for Pleasant Grove City back in the mid-nineties. That's my hometown up in Utah County. The, uh, at the, uh, at the time that we, back then, we were looking at doing something more with, uh, secondary system. What the trend was in the area there was to do full citywide systems and start requiring it of, of all new subdivisions that they put in the secondary. You know, and we were, and, and, you know, cities were going in and installing the new system throughout the city. We made the decision at Pleasant Grove at that time that we didn't think that really made sense for us. We bucked the trend and we went with just a backbone system trying to get to our lar- large outdoor users. Since that time, um, Pleasant Grove decided that wasn't the right move for them and they went in and installed a full citywide system. Um, and it, of course, uh, was much more expensive than it would have been twenty years earlier when we made the decision to go with a backbone system. And, um, you know, and so that, I, I brought the issue up, said, you know, Pleasant Grove's experience was, went with the backbone and then decided that they needed more. Now, as we look at that though, there are some differences. You know, we already have, um, a lot of water conservation efforts underway, we have our conservation tiers. We are already doing things to make progress on lowering that water, that water usage. So the benefit of going with the full citywide system would be less than what it was for Pleasant Grove to make the decision to reverse course and put in a full citywide system. But that, that was really what brought it up. I just, I just wanted to ask the question, hey, are we sure this is the route we want to go? So that got discussion going internally with staff and then it's, uh, Jonathan bringing it to you to get your, your feelings on it. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on how we even got into this discussion. But yeah, there, there are differences between Cedar City and Pleasant Grove in what we have already done. That, uh, I'm not sure that a full citywide system would, would work for us. It might work against our current water conservation efforts, I'm not sure.
One other thing, Jonathan, that I don't know if this is on your radar, I'd be curious to see what they say in a study. When we went to that water conference in Denver, there was a lot of talk of new ways that in industry and industrial can use effluent water to cool and those kinds of things. So I don't know if maybe it's worth looking into when we're doing things, the cost to just run a pipe out to the Port Fifteen area or into our major industrial areas and then see.
Yeah.
What happens from there, I don't know what you guys think about that, but I'd be curious. I mean, yeah, when it comes to those big cooling units, effluent water is kind of the future, that's the way they're.
You gotta have the power though.
And so I don't know, I don't know if it's worth asking in the study to see what it would cost, you know, to kind of plan a, a trunk line that goes out there. I don't know, I don't know what you guys think or what staff even thinks of that idea, but I think planning for the future might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, that, that has definitely come up in the discussions about running, you know, continuing to line out Highway fifty-six to Port Fifteen and, and the, you know.
They're finding more and more ways to use that effluent water in those big factories for cooling and so.
Yeah. So, and that might just, that might be driven by, you know, development that happens out there that, that needs that, I don't know.
And I don't know, I don't know if it's worth talking to David Johnson to see if maybe anything has come up that people have said, do you have, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we could look at and study.
Depending what that pipeline's gonna cost too.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah.
But you don't know that until you do it in the study and.
Yeah, I'm just saying to be curious to see what the study says about it, whether or not we should even look at it.
Yeah. But I, you know, I echo Kent's sentiments as far as, uh, conservation. I, I am actually concerned if we did a full citywide system, that might be sending the wrong message because we want people to limit, you know, what they're using it in their, at their residences, which is what's, uh, and really, uh, all the developers are going that direction with, going with the conservation tiers and so.
And the water used for households has actually shown that it's working. It, it is, without a doubt.
Yes. So if we're, if we're gonna be limiting, uh, usage at residences, now we will still have, you know, large open spaces for, for people to use and, and that's where the, you know, secondary irrigation system would come in, we'd send the water to those large, uh, spaces, um, that have turf. And, uh, so that, yeah, that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at. But, yeah, we just wanted to get the council's feeling on that and, and so we can move forward.
Yeah.
With the study.
I, I still feel that we should look at expanding the partial system rather than full citywide, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, I, in my opinion, I think we should look at the expanded partial system rather than the full citywide system.
I think so too, that's the way I would prefer to go.
And I think.
I want to use it, but let's use it wisely.
And I think it's worth noting that as, as we had talked about that with Hanson Allen and Lucian, they, with some of the other municipal clients they work with, they kind of came away from that with the idea that the partial system probably made more sense as well. They weren't real high on the full citywide system either.
I think there's two negatives on the full citywide system. Number one is you're maintaining a whole other water system.
Correct.
And second of all, people get the attitude that because of secondary water system, they can use all they want.
Yep.
And they may, we'd lose our conservation that we are working on.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah.
So is, what else do you need from us, Jonathan?
I think that's all, I don't know if that needs to go to a formal vote next week or if we can just, you know, kind of move forward.
We formally voted.
I think it's in the minutes.
Move forward.
Move it on.
Did we informally vote, voted?
Okay.
Thank you, item number nine, Martin's Flat Well Discussion.
Four inches per hour?
Yeah, four inches.
What's going on?
Yeah, it's slow, going really slow.
Yeah, that is not good.
The bit looks good, a lot better than.
So, yeah, as far as Martin's Flat, we're frustrated with the, you know, the rate, the drilling rate, obviously. It's very, very slow. If they were to continue at this rate, it would take another almost four and a half months to, to get down to twenty-one hundred feet, so.
Unless they hit a, hit a different strata, right? If they poke through whatever's in.
Yeah, I mean, we're hopeful, yeah, we're hopeful that they can get through that formation that they're in and then get into, you know, better drilling. We just, we just don't know when that's.
A formation that goes that slow, that's not a good thing, right? That's obviously not a thing that has water.
Good thing underneath it.
Underneath it, but the actual, what they're going through is not holding any water.
Yeah.
No.
So, so the driller, drilling company is requesting to, to reduce the diameter of the bore hole, what they call telescoping down to a, to a smaller diameter, um, to see if that will increase the, the drilling rate. Now, they, they don't know for sure whether that will help, but they, they'd like, they'd like to try it. They've, they've gone through, I think this is the fourth, fourth different, different drill bit that they've used. So they've actually changed out to different types of drill bits to see if that would help and, and it, nothing seems to be helping.
They've hit something hard. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Um, again, help me understand, because I read through this pretty carefully and, so if we do approve that and if we go down to a smaller size, let's say we are successful and we find good water down there and it's working, what does that do when we come time to do the full production well? Does it increase our costs because the bore hole wasn't large enough to begin with? I just don't know how that works.
Possibly could increase the cost because they're having to drill through more material, but, but I, I don't know that for sure. I don't know for sure.
Well, I guess, once they get the hole in the ground, it's not gonna cost us any more because of the reduced size of the hole, that's the question.
That's the question. And will we be able to, let's say it's successful, will it handle the volume that we need? Because it's, you're going from here into a smaller one up into a bigger.
Would they case it smaller all the way up or would they neck it down and telescope it like they mentioned?
No, I think, I think, we have to understand that if when they drill it out, they'll have to drill it out. Again, they will fill this up as they do the zone testing, they'll fill it up with bentonite as they come up and they'll do their testing and then they've got to drill it all out. And you're right, it'll have to be drilled out at a larger thing and they'll hit the same stuff, we want them to go down the same hole.
That's what.
So it's still gonna have to be bigger.
That's what.
Question is, who knows whether because there's a po- there's a smaller hole in the middle, does it break off easier? The key, the, the, if I may, the thing that I keep looking at, I keep thinking to myself is, the one thing we need to know, more than any other thing, is, is the Navajo sandstone within our reach or is it not? And we find that out with a smaller bit and allow. And we find that out with a smaller bit and allow these guys to move, hopefully move better. They're, they're committed to go the 2,100 feet and they're doing it, but their, their time has already run out. These become big losers, Ron, when you just flat out go way beyond your, your timeframe that you planned on. It is unfortunate and, and, you know, I don't know whether it's rubber or what it is there, but it's not grinding through. But we, the two questions I want to know and I want to know, that tells us whether we're going on or whether we're going to spend five or six million dollars in, or 10 or 12 or 20 in the canyon using that, with 33% of our drainage comes, this basin comes out of Cedar Canyon. We don't use any of it except the spring water and we can't use it now without filtering it to the $2.5 million. So, the big question I have is, is Navo sandstone an excellent water within our grasp? If not, there's some 850 water on the higher zones. We're in zones that I think probably will produce 850 TDS water. We want it better than that.
Yeah.
And that's why we want to at least look, explore to the deep and, and, and that, and I, I was opposed at first, but I have thought about this a lot and we had a long discussion and, and, and I, I think I understand that it answers both of our questions. It does give us two of the three questions. It tells us whether we get in the Navo sandstone and it tells us the quality of the water that's down in that formation. And if both of, we don't maybe know how much volume, we don't know it anyway, even if we did, drilled the 14-inch hole, we still wouldn't really know that, but we'd have better idea. But we can find out if there, and if it's not there, there's no, then, then the question, that's a mute issue. It doesn't matter whether we've got a 36-inch hole or a 3-inch hole, it's, it's a mute issue.
So, do we, do we, do they really feel, or do we really feel going from 14 and 3/4 to 9 and 7/8 is going to? I mean, yes, if they can break through, is it a different kind of bit or is it the same, just smaller hole?
Just not taking as much of the-
Yeah.
It's a smaller hole.
It's the same energy twisting just to the-
Just a smaller diameter.
I'm in favor of trying it because obviously they're going to know real quick if they're-
Yeah, it won't take long.
How many inches it's going to take an hour once they go to a smaller bit. And, and then Mayor's right, I mean, once we get down there, we see what's there or not and-
We can't do dynamite? I mean, there's no way.
I, I think the mayor answered my question, Jonathan, but so going to the smaller one, it obviously doesn't change our quality testing. We, it's the same water, but it, it might change a little bit on us knowing how much, right?
A little bit, not, not much.
Not enough to make a big difference? Okay. Yeah, I mean, if they can get going faster-
That will increase it eight inches an hour.
Yeah. Well, and I hate, the thing that makes me worry is if it's really this slow, imagine when they're trying to drill one this big.
Well, the intent is, you know, that you'll have a hole to break off.
Well, in my understanding is, too, they're proposing that the smaller drill and the smaller hole, they're still not going to change their price that they're charging us.
Right, right. They're proposing at the same price, so that's why I wanted to bring it to the council, make sure-
But it's a test hole, so we'd have to go back and re-bore what we're doing anyway.
Yeah, and that's going to be a whole different bid to do that.
Yeah, especially if this keeps up.
Yeah.
And they might get out of it in that much distance.
Yeah, exactly.
They might get out of-
They might.
They may never get out of it.
I guess that is one question I have is, if they get through it pretty quickly, meaning that-
Then we go back to the big one.
Will they go back and just, you know?
Nah, I think they want to keep.
No.
They'll just keep going with the smaller?
So, we can get to where we can test it and then determine what we're going to do.
Okay.
I think that's the way to go. Let's get the smaller hole down there as quick as we can, see what we got, so we can move from there.
Okay, all right. So, same thing there, just move, move forward?
Yes, just move forward. Let's get it done.
Okay.
It's also an okay.
Yeah, we have the okay.
We'll put it on the agenda, we'll just say it's okay.
Do you have information on the, for the drawdown test?
For the next one?
Probably the next one.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay.
You want me to stay up here?
That's what I'm saying, just stay up there.
Well, item number 10, water well exploration locations. I think we're kind of in a holding pattern.
Yes and no. We need to have a discussion on the drawdown test. And once that goes forward, we'll have all the data, we can pull it all together. I'm still yet to locate 93-year-old landowner, but I'm getting close. I've gone through the genealogy.
Oh, for the neighboring land?
For the neighboring land, yes.
Okay, I was like, he's 93?
She is, anyway.
Mr. Hunter, like, is that 93?
No, 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 not, no, I'm talking about the one next to the barn. So, so that's close. And I, I think we'll just be more prudent to get that and see where we're at so that we can start having real negotiations and talk about real-
Do we know a cost?
Some numbers were thrown out there.
Can I talk about that in this meeting or in-
No, well, that, that's probably more of a closed session, isn't it?
For us to do a drawdown test?
Oh, the drawdown test, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, if it's okay, I like, if I can go through these numbers here.
I thought you meant the well cost.
So, I've put together actually two options here. So, these, these are just kind of upfront costs. These don't have anything to do with, you know, actually purchasing, well, they, they do have something to do with purchasing a well, but these are upfront costs that the city would need to, to pay. So, we, last week, we talked about the sewer lines in Zone 1. So, the first cost is the cost outside of the townhome units. And then we got some kind of bad news today on the cost for the, underneath the building. So, we, we reached out to the state, to the Division of Drinking Water, and they said that the sewer lines underneath the buildings need to have the special construction.
Just up through the pad, not in the house.
Right. Once it gets up inside the unit, it doesn't need it, but underneath, they're running into just-
Do you know what that is?
So, they're looking at doing a few HDPE. I prob, yeah, go ahead.
They have to special order, special make the, the P-traps that go under there and all the fittings. And HDPE is usually 4-inch and we don't need that big, yeah.
They don't make the little stuff and the little stuff isn't very good.
Correct.
Not cross-linked.
Wow. So, Tyler's still working on some costs, that's just-
These are very preliminary.
Preliminary, and so I think it could be cheaper. But even, even, well, we can talk about the whole package at some point, so.
Yeah, so that, that's just a very preliminary number, 120,000. We're hoping that comes down significantly, but we don't, we just don't know for sure yet. We, we have explored a few other options with the state, but they haven't really been willing to look at other options. We'd like to maybe-
Grout.
Grout and, grout encasing or doing some kind of concrete encasement. But it sounds like they're not willing to go for that. So, but we're, we're still looking at numbers on that. We would also have to do the source protection plan, so I've got a cost there, the 5,700. An appraisal of the well would be about 6,000. Of course, we, we've already done most of the water quality samples. The test pump cost, now, I actually got two different costs on that. This first option is to leave Brent Hunter's well, or Brent Hunter's pump in the well and use, use that pump to do the test pump. That would be the 27,000.
And the only reason they want to put their own is because of the VFD, right? The variable speed for the drawdown and it has a VFD in it.
Right. There's a couple of other benefits, I think, to, to pulling the existing pump out. One, Ken, if you can maybe scroll down, one benefit is that we could run, run a camera down it. The city has a camera and we could, there wouldn't really be any cost to it other than just water department's time. But I think there would be some benefit to running a camera down it and just making sure-
I mean, that's some smart due diligence. If you're going to spend, you know, a lot of money, we're not going to say no. If we're spending the money on the well that we're thinking of spending, what's the, I mean, what's the cost difference between the two options?
10,000.
$12,000 to get another, I mean, that's kind of some due diligence there.
Yeah.
One thing I don't see in here, what about the cost of the electricity to run the, the test, the drawdown? Are we going to have to pay Mr. Hunter for the electricity we use during that time, probably?
He has capacity in his pond, so, yeah.
It's probably, it's probably not huge.
I think the tester brings generation, he produces his own power. He's used to doing it out in fields and places where there's no power.
Oh, so that number probably includes all the power.
It's probably on the truck.
And, and he said that he had capacity in his pond, so they can run it up there when they do the drawdown test. So, it's going to benefit him anyway, so.
Yeah, he's going to get all the water.
So, the test, the test pump contractor said they could be out there in about a week and a half to two weeks. That's the quickest they can come in. So, but we, we would need to kind of decide whether we want to do the, you know, test with the existing pump in it or pull the, pull, pull the pump out. It seems like we would probably get better results as well if we pull the pump and use the test pump. There's some question whether we can get good drawdown measurements with the existing pump in there, at least what the test pump contractor said.
So, they'd pull Brent's pump out, they would do the test, they put Brent's pump back?
Yes.
Well, I recommend we do that one personally, but.
And then in the meantime, and then once, once both pumps are out, then we, we can run the camera down and get, get all the video information that way as well.
And so, that's just going to tell us the, the quality of the casing and any other issues?
So, we can look at the casing, we can also look back behind the screen, make sure we can see gravel pack all the way down through. We can see if there's any issues down in the, you know, in the hole with any, sometimes you'll get problems at the seams in the casing. We can look at the, all the perforations, make sure those are uniform going down. We can see how much, if there's any buildup in the bottom with material, with sand and things like that, so.
So, would that be staff's recommendation?
That, that would be my recommendation, but I mean, obviously, there is additional cost to it, but.
Yeah, and the cost is small, but it's also about a five-year-old well.
It's new, fairly new.
And so, you know, if it were 20 years old, then it would be a no-brainer, but you're kind of on the, you know, it's-
Right on the edge?
Yeah, it's all new.
Yeah, yeah, so, so those are the costs that we're looking at to do that. And then, of course, we have the issues of the-
Do we need to determine tonight, or is that something that we determine for next Wednesday? Whether we, which drawdown test we go through? Do we need to give direction tonight?
So that they can be going.
So they can, so that we, so that they know, hey, in that week and a half, in 10 to 12 days, we are on site doing what we are needing to do.
Yeah, I think it'd be better if you decided.
Let's just decide right now, what do we do?
And, and the question is, where is this 185,000 coming from?
So, oh, there's a planned budget revision for December.
Okay.
My recommendation to you right now, your only live budget to take it out of is Martin's Flat. We spend the money out of the Martin's Flat budget and we can revise back in, in December as needed.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got to have money to pay it.
Well, I think, I think when all said and done, it's going to come out of the Rush Lake water, money.
Yeah, the Florida.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we still have to do a budget revision to get it there.
The live budget we have to pay for it now would be the Martin's Flat budget.
Correct.
And we'd take the Rush Lake money and revise that back to Martin's Flat later.
We're going to take it out of one bucket and then put that bu, put it back in that bucket in December.
Spend it out of that.
I think there's enough in that Martin's Flat budget to pay the current contractor for what he's doing at his rates and to make this expenditure as well.
You mean the current contractor on the-
What's that, Martin?
On Martin's Flat.
Drilling the- Oh, okay.
The current driller.
So, I think, though, that what we're discussing, we, we want that to pump test, those parts of it done, and then this whole negotiation will happen on the well.
That's correct.
So, all this business with the sewer lines, I mean, we're committed to do the initial sewer line, but not underneath all the houses. We have, we could get out of that if we decided not to do this at all. But we can't get out of what we said last week we would do on the main line in the streets.
Correct.
But some of this others, you know, it-
Two through five.
We're really, yeah, we're kind of getting ahead of us and what we really need is the data to know how much drawdown there is. We've seen the quality, we like it. It's in the 500 range in TDS and we like three, but we'll take five. And, and then, so we, we, we know what we're trying to get to, we need to know that quantity that the state was certified because that determines, then we can start negotiating.
I think we need to do the drawdown test, let's determine which one we're going with and then let's go from there. So, we each need to voice our opinion and come to an agreement and-
And I think it will be beneficial to the deal, to the, to Hunter, if, if the drawdown test can be as favorable as possible. So, I think that by doing it this way, we'll, we'll get the best we can get, most we can certify.
I guess that's one question. Do we have to, is there any reason we have to share with him the drawdown results?
Why wouldn't we?
Why wouldn't we?
Because we're trying to protect our interest.
Most of the records we maintain are public.
Yeah, yeah.
Unwell, well data is public.
There could be exceptions, but this could be private, protected or controlled. We'd have to look into that closer, but I think you have to go into it with the thought that most of the records we maintain are public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can find well data on everywhere because it's public.
Yeah.
That's how we did the research to zone in on that.
Well, let's determine which one we want to go with and then let's give him direction to go that way.
One, one thing, I have not talked to Brent Hunter about the option of pulling out his pump and, you know, doing, doing that.
So, I talked to him, he said he was fine with that if we had to.
Okay.
But he said he didn't think we had to, to do a drawdown test, so.
So, it's not just the drawdown, it's also the cammering, too.
The cammering is what-
That's correct.
If we pull it, we can do the camera, too.
I just, yeah.
I'm afraid that if we don't do it, any appraiser, any value will always question those things and will, I think it'll be to his best advantage to put as much light on his product as he has, he's selling.
And for $12,000, then let's do it and then we have, we have all the information to make good decisions and, and start.
That's been the whole reason that we're continually doing this is for the knowledge. So, let's go with the $39,000, Mr. Phillips.
Have you been in contact with Brent? If not, I can talk to him as well, he's fine. I mean, he said he was fine if that's what we had to do.
I had, I did not, I did not talk to Brent about that.
Can you scroll up a little bit on this, just to look at the other?
Thank you.
Councilman Wilkie, is that your recommendation?
Oh, yeah, no, that, yeah.
Let's go ahead and do it so we can move forward.
I mean, I look at it as $12,000 in due diligence. You're going to spend, I mean, if we were to buy the well and by the time we do the other things we have to do, we're, we all know we're over a million dollars, so, yeah, $12,000 in due diligence to make sure that, that's a pretty low cost to make sure we're buying.
Well, the intention is to get water in a pipe, but do the best way we can for the citizens of Cedar City, so that a little bit-
And that's our best option currently.
It is, so let's do it. Okay, there we go.
In fact, it's our only option currently.
It is, it is.
That was almost a motion, but not quite.
Let's go ahead with it. Is that a motion?
I thought it was a motion.
Do we need another okay, or do we need an official?
And this count, is this the drawdown test that will count for the state for later? Or they're going to have to do another one?
We're going to go with the drawdown test in the video.
Yeah, we can't make a vote here, this is not an action meeting, this is just direct.
We're just, we're going to go.
Jonathan, so will this count as the drawdown test that the state will use later as well?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the only drawdown test we'll ever have to do?
Yes.
Why would we do two?
Well, I'm just, I'm curious, I didn't know they let you do it. I thought different times.
No, it's state-certified, that's why we're doing it.
That's not my question, if you let me ask it. My question is, I'm just surprised at the time of year.
You don't have to do two.
Do you know who is going to do this? Is that Aslam?
Uh, yeah, look at-
Why would we do a drawdown test that didn't have state certification on it?
Yeah, I got, I got, actually I got two, two quotes and Aslam was the lowest one.
Okay.
Okay, let's take the best prize.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilkie, you're saying time of year?
I guess I'm just, it doesn't, you can do a drawdown test.
You can do it at any time.
Any time of the year?
Yes.
Okay, because it's just other, it just surprises me that they do that because you would think they'd want it during, when everybody else is also pumping wells and doing things. And right now, nobody's pulling water out of the ground, so it just, I don't know, surprises me, but I'm glad that that's the case.